Okay, I've just started the live stream. If I could just have confirmation that the live stream is up and running, please.
Yes, it is Alison.
Perfect. And then so in a moment, I'll start the recording and we can begin the meeting. Mr Bentley, can you just unmute yourself and say hello, please? So we can make sure we can hear you?
Hello, good evening.
Thank you very much. And sorry, Mr Pillbeam, can you just unmute yourself and say hello?
Hello.
Thank you very much.
Okay, hopefully everybody can hear me. My name is Craig Austin. Good evening to everyone. I'm the Director for Environment at Bedford Borough Council. And once again, I'm the Chair of this meeting. I'd like to welcome everyone who has taken time to participate in today's virtual public meeting. Second two meetings organised by the Borough Council. Which are designed in public and businesses to contribute to Bedford Borough Council's response to East West Rail consultation, complement the information gathered at the relevant parish council meetings, and the information already collated via the council's website, which in turn will then better inform the council in forming a view that it so that it can provide a thorough response for the East West Rail consultation, which is due to close on the 9th of June 2021. I'd also like to point out that anyone wishing to add any further comments or questions, for example, people viewing the meeting via YouTube can do so by sending those messages to the following email address, which is ewrpublicmeetings@bedford.gov.uk. I'll say that one more time. ewrpublicmeetings@bedford.gov.uk. Clearly, we have limited amount of time, two hours. People decide for these evening meetings. And to put into some context, we've had well over 400 questions and comments so far as a result of holding these meetings. So I'm going to ask two things of the people chosen to speak tonight. Firstly, that people asking questions keep to their three minute per question allotted time. It's very important. So everybody gets a chance that has been asked to speak tonight to do so. Secondly, that people stick to the questions that have been agreed. The reason for this is yesterday, we had some duplication of questions because people hadn't stuck to their original question. So it's vital that please, if we could, make sure that we stick to the questions that we pushed. And so you have your three minutes per question allotted time spell. We have a panel today to respond to the questions and comments. The panel consists of Mayor Dave Hodgson, elected Mayor of Bedford Borough, and Mayor Dave also has portfolio holder responsibilities for economic development and regeneration. We have councillor Michael Headley, councillor for Putno, portfolio holder for finance, and the council's representative on the East West Rail Consortium, which I must point out consists of some other 19 local authorities and has and he's not the East West Rail Company. And he's held this position on the consortium for a number of years. From the officers side, we have John Shortland, who is the Chief Officer for Planning and Infrastructure Development. The order for this evening will be that I will ask the mayor to make some introductory comments, and then John Shortland to provide a presentation on the East West Rail consultation process, the importance in gathering residents' views, and work already done by the council that will feed into the consultation process. Then we will receive questions from members of the public and allow time for panel members to respond. Before I do that, I would also like to reassure those people who have submitted questions, but who do not have the opportunity to have a say today, that they will receive a written response. And those written and those responses will be made public. In addition, in an attempt to ensure that we get a wide as possible reflection of the questions and comments submitted, and because of the demand of people wanting to have their say at these meetings, the council have categorised the questions comments submitted into the following groups. Council backing of corridor E, demolition of houses in poets, freight trains, usage, electrician booms within corridor E, and destruction of environments, noise and air pollution, Marston Vale line service concepts, St John's station location, Stuartby, Kempton, Hardwick stations, and finally, impact on Wickham Station. The maximum questions that you you agree to to say on the this evening, I will do my best to let people know when their allotted time is coming to an end. I'd like to now introduce today's panel members again. Mayor Dave Hodgson, councillor Michael Headley, of which I said there's been well over 400 now so far, and provide more information so to inform people on what the council has done so far in preparing its response to the East West Rail consultation process. Should also point out that Lesley Blue from Democratic Services and her team are acting to facilitate this virtual meeting, and the meeting is being recorded so that council can pick up each and every point raised at this meeting. Lesley will introduce each member of the public and keep an eye out for any further questions or comments that are sent during the meeting. So I will now ask Mayor Dave to make introductory comments.
Thank you very much, Craig. You were cutting out a bit there. You might want to think about your broadband width and whether you need to turn the video off so we can all hear you. I've just checked and I think other people were having the same problem. We've categorised the questions into sections. So if you could, as Craig said, and hope you heard him, stick to your question because officers have been through the question to try give a spread within the topic areas. So the first thing is to say thank you very much for coming along and spending your evening to in this meeting. As Craig said, I won't be long with this because I'm going to repeat much of what Craig said, that we will publish all the questions, not just the ones that were being asked tonight, but all the questions that submitted, and we will actually publish answers to those before our meeting on the 2nd of June. Please send in all your views and we'll consider them as inputs because we're having a debate on the 2nd of June at a full council meeting to decide the council's response to the consultation by East West Rail Company. Myself, councillor Headley, and John Shortland had meetings with over a dozen parishes and the poets group to listen to their views. We have these two meetings, and we're also, of course, looking at the views and the questions that come in. As well as feeding your input into us, please do make sure that you respond individually and as organisations to the East West Rail Company's consultation. It's them that will be taking the decision, and it's important you put your views to them. We are here to do the collectively, the council's consultation response, but you need to make sure your voice is heard as soon as you can. So we'll do our best to get as many answers as we can by the meeting on the 2nd of June, but the answers will be published. That's all I'm going to say now, and I'm going to hand over, I believe, to John to give a presentation.
Thank you, Dave. Jeremy is going to load the presentation up. And then we can begin. Sorry, it seems it's Lyn, not Jeremy, my mistake. Could you just change it to the screen, presentation view, Lyn? Lovely, thank you. Okay, so I'm John Shortland. I'm the Chief Officer for Planning and Infrastructure Development at the council. And I want to take you through a little bit of the background to the East West Rail and the consultation, and then some of the main issues within it. So if we could have the next slide, please. And the next one, thank you. So, oh, sorry, could you just go back to the map? Thank you. A lot of people talk about East West Rail as being a railway that's linking Oxford and Cambridge. And it's certainly true that at the moment, it's starting in Oxford. But it has other branches to it. So there's one that goes down to Aylesbury and Prince's Risborough. There's one that goes up to Milton Keynes, and it doesn't stop in Cambridge. The plan is it for it to continue into East Anglia and go across to both Norwich and Ipswich in due course. And that's what's called the eastern section. What we're being consulted on at the moment is the central section, which runs from Bedford to Cambridge. Next slide, please. So the idea for East West Rail started in the 1990s, and a consortium of 19 local authorities came together to campaign for East West Rail. They contributed a small amount of money each to putting a study together, which was eventually picked up by the government. And the consortium is currently chaired by Buckinghamshire Council, previously by Central Bedfordshire Council, and it's held on a fairly rotating basis every few years. In 2017, the government decided that it needed to step in and took the project away from Network Rail, who had been running it until then, and asked the newly formed East West Rail Company to take it forward and hopefully do it quicker than was otherwise be the case. Since then, the section from Oxford to Bister has been opened and trains are running. And the section from Bister onwards to Aylesbury, Bletchley and Milton Keynes is currently under construction. Next slide, please. And the next. Thank you. In terms of deciding where the route should go, there's been a process in place for six or seven years now of funneling down from a large list of 20 initial routes which were under consideration to get to where we are today. So those 20 routes covered a very wide geographic spread. The most northerly of them came through Bedford, went up the middle and main line to Kettering, turned right across open countryside to Peterborough, and then followed through to Ely and Cambridge. And in the south, a route was proposed which went from Bletchley, didn't come to Bedford at all, but went straight across to Harlington, Higgin, and then Cambridge from the south. So quite a large geography that was covered by those initial 20 routes. Next slide, please. The year later, those 20 were narrowed down to seven who were on the shortlist. I won't go through all of those, but you can see that three of them went through Bedford. Two of them went near Bedford to a Bedford South station, and two of them, H2 and N, didn't come to Bedford at all. One went to Luton and the other to Harlington. So those were the seven that were in contention by 2015. Next slide, please. Another year later, and the shortlist was whittled down to two. Both of those were actually variants on the previous option C. And in railway terms, they performed fairly similarly. Route C1 continued to come through Bedford and then out to Sandy and Cambridge. And Route C2 bypassed Bedford to the south and again went on to Sandy and then Cambridge. And those were the two options which were taken to consultation in 2019. Next slide, please. So we had those two routes, and within them, five corridors were identified. The Bedford-Sandy-Cambridge C1 became the corridor options D and D, and the Bedford-South-Sandy-Cambridge option C2 became corridors A, B, and C. And in 2020, back in January, we heard that corridor E was chosen as the one route as had been narrowed down from 20 to 7 to 2, and then to that one. Next slide, please. So for those of you who are struggling to remember corridor E, that is the map that shows it. It comes out of Bedford to the north, heading between Black Brickhill and Clapham. It then heads east, widening up to quite a wide corridor between Sandy and St Niets, then narrows back down to Camborne and across to Cambridge. Next slide, please. So the reasons that corridor E was chosen, there were several that were given by East West Rail. And we need to keep reminding ourselves that it was East West Rail and the Department for Transport nationally who made this decision. But I've picked out three of the key reasons that they gave. Firstly, it scored the highest of all of the options on four out of the five key criteria that were set. Secondly, it has the greatest opportunity to avoid the most environmentally challenging areas with good opportunities to achieve biodiversity net gain. And thirdly, that serving Bedford Station provides easy connectivity into the town centre and an opportunity for regeneration in this area. As I say, those three stood out to me. I think there was a list of about nine or 10 reasons that backed the decision. Next slide, please. So we've talked quite a bit about what the route is and how the decision's made. But what's underlying that? Why do people think it's a good idea? So if we move on to the next slide, I've tried to pick out some of those. The benefits of the railway. Firstly, it provides faster journey times into town and city centres, particularly at peak times. People will know that driving into Bedford is a fairly congested experience in the peak hour. Into Cambridge may well be worse. Into Oxford is very difficult as well. By having the railway running into the town centres, also down to Aylesbury and Milton Keynes, it provides people with a much better, more regular journey time to get into the places where they need to get. It also gives faster journey times for long distance trips. So if you want to go from Oxford to Cambridge currently, you have to go via London or via Birmingham and Leicester. That is a very long trip, and this will make it a lot shorter. It also provides better interchanges. And that's one of the main advantages we see for Bedford Midland Station, being an interchange between east-west and north-south services. And in terms of the business case that has been put together for the western section, that's the bit from Oxford across to Bedford. The business case shows 0.9 billion pounds per year of benefit from introducing the railway. 750 million of that benefit is to the people who use the railway and the people who don't use the railway but benefit from less congestion because other people are using the railway. And 150 million of wider benefits, mainly things to do with the economy in terms of jobs and employment. Next slide, please. So those are overall benefits of what's happening with the railway. If we focus in a little more on Bedford itself, the route coming into Bedford Midland is forecast to create 468 additional jobs in the borough, provide an annual benefit to our economy of around 20 million pounds. And a note in passing that doing so provides 6 million pounds a year more benefit to the borough than a route which bypasses the town to the south. Now, all of those, if you think back to the previous slide, are the wider economic benefits. These are not benefits to the travelling public. So if we think that there were five times as many transport user benefits for the scheme as a whole than there were wider economic benefits, then those figures would grow to 100 million and 30 million apiece. And that's not the end of the story. Those figures are based on the operation of the Oxford-Cambridge bit of the railway, as and when it's extended into East Anglia, across to Ipswich, Norwich, and down the Thames Valley, further annual benefits of 8.7 million are available. So that's quite large numbers there of improvements and benefits to the economy of the town and the wider borough. Next slide, please. On top of that, we see a lot of benefits for coming through Bedford because doing so will support the regeneration of the town, facilitating investment in the delivery of the town master plan that we've put together. I think it was back in 2019. And it enables access to the employment and facilities of Bedford to the residents of settlements across the Ark. So from Oxford to Bletchley, up the Marston Vale, from Tempsford, Sandy, and across to Cambridge, people who need to get to Bedford can do it much more quickly and easily. Bedford Midland will become an interchange hub of national importance as a result of this work. Next slide, please. So we're going to go on now to the issues that are brought forward in the current consultation and some of our initial thinking on that. Very sorry, just bear with me, my screensaver's come on. Thank you. So the first place where the East West Rail enters the borough, coming up from Bletchley, is the Marston Vale. Here, the existing two tracks will be upgraded to cope with trains which run at much faster speeds than the current slow train that stops at all stations down the line. East West Rail have put forward two concepts for the Marston Vale. The first would retain that slow, slow train that stops at all the stations. That would run once an hour, and there would be four additional fast trains which would stop only at Bletchley, Wobinsands, Ridgemont, and Bedford. So the other stations wouldn't see any better services. Concept two adds new stations to the mix, one at Liddlington and one at Stuartby, which would be a new station replacing the existing Stuartby Station and Kempton-Hardwick, and also Bedford-St John's. We move to the next slide. This shows the service pattern for option one. In light blue along the top there, you've got the stopping trains travelling slowly between all stations. You've then got two trains which start at Bletchley and go through Bedford and on to Cambridge, and two which start in Oxford, again, stop at Bletchley and go through Bedford and on to Cambridge. And that's the service pattern every hour. So there would be five trains each way each hour. For concept two, if we move to the next slide, this shows the existing halts at Stuartby and Kempton-Hardwick. Both of those would be closed, and a new station would be constructed in the Purple Oval. That would, I believe, be either side of the current Broadmead Road level crossing, which would be closed and replaced by a footbridge. That would allow this different second option of stopping patterns, which is on the next slide. And this, you can see, shows the fast trains stopping both at the new Stuartby-Hardwick Station and Bedford-St John's, and then going on to Bedford Midland. So you've got the pattern of two trains per hour going Bletchley to Cambridge, and two that go came Oxford to Cambridge, and all of those would be fast trains. If we move to the next slide, the summary of all that is that we would have a new Stuartby-Hardwick Station to replace the existing halts. All of the level crossings along the line would be closed, and new bridges would replace them. And the emerging thinking in terms of what we're likely to respond to East West Rail with is that we feel concept two offers a much better service with more trains going to more places than option one. We would like them to go a little further, and we will be making a representation that one of the Oxford-Cambridge trains additionally stops at Stuartby-Hardwick to provide a direct connection to Oxford without the need to change. Moving on to the next slide, we have two options put forward for Bedford-St John's Station. Both would see the current station close and a new one be constructed. The first would be nearer to the hospital on what's known as the Higgin alignment, because that's the old, old line that went from Bedford to Higgin before the Bedford to London line was built. An option to move St John's Station south between Amptill Road and Elstow Road. Again, our emerging thinking is that option one provides a greater opportunity, both for redevelopment of the area where the current station is and the Danfoss Buildings. Those of you who've been to Bedford lately will notice they've been demolished. And there's quite a large area of land there available for regeneration, which fits in with our master plans. And also, when we've been talking to people from the hospital, they're quite keen on a connection from Bedford Hospital, Bedford-St John's, across to Cambridge South, which will be built very close to Addenbrooks. So providing a sort of Health Link rail service. Moving on. The yellow option there is the site of the station nearer the hospital, and the red one is the site between Amptill Road and Elstow Road. Next slide, please. Moving on to Midland Station, what we have here is the once in a generation opportunity for regeneration, not only of the station itself, but of the area around it. We feel the relationship between the station and the town centre is currently very weak. If you don't know Bedford, when you walk out of the station for the first time, it's very difficult to work out where you should be going to get to the town centre. We will plan to work with East West Rail and other partners to redevelop the station as a nationally important hub set in a thriving environment. And the next few slides give some ideas about that. So we have here, the blue is the area within which East West Rail expect their tracks to come in, and the purple rectangle is the site within which the station will be redeveloped. Now, you can see from that that that's a fairly vague plan at the moment. That's a large area that wouldn't all be needed. We don't yet know whether East West Rail plan to build their new station platforms, north or south of Ford End Road Bridge. So not knowing that, we're in a slightly more difficult position when it comes to looking at the Ashburnham Road and the prospect of houses being demolished there. It's not that we're not interested in coming to an opinion on that, but given the rather vague nature of the proposals at the moment, it's not possible to evaluate those adequately to be able to give a firm opinion as to which houses might be under threat, and what could be done about it if that's the case. We will be returning to that as the scheme progresses. Next slide, please. So for the station itself, we want an improved passenger experience. The key aspect of that is putting in what's known as an up-fast platform. This would be one where the express trains coming from Leicester, Nottingham and Sheffield will be able to stop at Bedford without diverting onto the slow lines. That will mean that they wouldn't lose the time that they currently do by making those movements, and that therefore the expresses could start stopping again during the peak hour, giving us the direct fast trains to London that we lost a couple of years ago. We also want to move the booking hall down to the Midland Road end of the site, so that people coming out of the station will be able to see which way to go to the town centre. We would like a western entrance so that people from Queen's Park can access the station without having to go across Ford End Road Bridge, round the corner of Ashburnham Road and back again. And we believe that we need additional car parking, not just for the people who will be coming to use the new trains, but also for people who want to use the existing trains but can't find a parking space after about 5 past 8 in the morning. Next slide, please. Around the station, we're currently awaiting the results of something called the Town Deal, which we've bid to government for. That decision is due by the end of the month, and it includes projects both for high quality public realm, possibly a square as you come out of the station building, where the quality of the stonework will be matching that that we're currently introducing in High Street and Silver Street. Improvements to Midland Road to spread those design principles all the way into the town centre, providing an attractive route for people to walk in. We need better access for pedestrians and cyclists, and better provision for buses and taxis. And we definitely need a Preben Street relief road. So this would be a road which would allow traffic to bypass the congested mini roundabout at Midland Road and Preben Street. Next slide, please. And in the wider area, I mentioned the master plan that we adopted in 2019 earlier. That includes proposals for improving the Ford End Road sites, grey friars along Ashburnham Road and south of the river linked to the St John's Station. And the proposals that East West Rail are currently putting forward would allow us to increase those master planning principles to cover the area where the current train sightings are, Jowett and the Thameslink sightings. So an additional development opportunity that could become available from a proper redevelopment of the station site. Next slide, please. So this slide shows you the master planning work that's been undertaken previously. Development, as I say, at Ford End Road, around the station and up Ashburnham Road, down Midland Road. down Midland Road into Greyfriars, south of the river and just up into St Paul's Square. So those are the areas which are currently part of our plans. If we can get hold of the area that's currently covered by the Jowett and Thameslink sightings in the middle there between the station and the river, that would give a quite an important, impressive looking centre focal point to the development and allow us to really make the most of the redevelopment opportunities that are coming to us through East West Rail. Next slide please. Moving north of the station, East West Rail are currently proposing to build two new dedicated tracks to the east of the existing railway north of Bedford Midland Station. Their plans show that that would involve the compulsory acquisition of some or all of 97 properties on Spencer Road, Milton Road, Sydney Road, Milrow and Chesterton Muse and properties in other areas such as Ashburnham Road, as I mentioned earlier, and also a small number in the open countryside are also at risk. We move to the next slide. This is East West Rail's plan showing the houses which are under threat in the Poets' Area and the different colours representing how much or how little of each property would be needed if you were to build two extra tracks. Next slide please. When East West Rail put out their consultation material at the end of March, it included a lot of background papers, including some from March 2019, which we saw for the first time. Within those, we found that Network Rail had already looked at the option of whether you needed six tracks north of Bedford Midland Station and their work in 2019 concluded that sufficient capacity is available on the existing infrastructure in this area to negate the need for this six-track option. So we were very interested to read that. And if we move to the next slide, we've commissioned our consultants, SLC Rail, to update that Network Rail study from 2019 and see what the current implications are. So they've based their work on the current timetable which starts on Monday. What they've found is that currently there are 28 minutes in every hour which would be available for East West Rail trains on the current tracks. And if a small amount of new point work, new track movements were put in place, that could increase to 40 minutes in the hour 67% of the time. And as you need five minutes headway between trains to make them run smoothly, then the four trains an hour that East West Rail are proposing would fit into the current situation and would fit very comfortably into an improved situation. Next slide please. We therefore have a strong preference for four tracks and we will be supporting that option. We're not just going to say that though and put all of our X into one basket. We're also doing some work to look at the amount of land that East West Rail say they would need to build six tracks, well, two new tracks. And currently they're proposing that they would need 19 metres of space to build those two tracks in. Now, given that tracks are four foot eight and a half inches wide each, that does seem excessive to us and we're doing some engineering work at the moment to see what the minimum amount of extra land they would need would be if they were to go ahead with six tracks. That's very much a fallback position. Our initial position and the one we will be putting forward very strongly is that there is no need for any new tracks. Next slide please. Moving on to the route from Clapham Green where the East West Rail diverts from the Mid and Main Line across to the East Coast Main Line, which runs between London, King's Cross and Edinburgh, calling it Sandy and St Neets. There are two real routes across Bedford Borough. Route one, the Northern Alignment and Route nine, the Southern Alignment. They diverge at the top of Clapham Green and go either side of Ravensden and then across to the East Coast Main Line in a fairly straight alignment from there onwards. Those are the two that East West Rail have said are their emerging preferences. But I think it's important that we point out that none of the five routes they're consulted on is ruled out. So if you have a view on one of the other numbers, two, six or eight, please put those forward as well as the views on Route one and nine. Don't think that it's just a straight fight between those two. Next slide please. So this slide shows those two routes in colour, the Southern and the Northern Alignment, both leading across to one of four potential new stations on the East Coast Main Line where there'll be interchanges with those trains to the north. Next slide please. We haven't yet come to a view or even an emerging view on which of those two alignments is the best for Bedford Borough. We're currently collecting information on them. Environmental information, noise and visual intrusion, heritage and archaeology, highways and rights of way impacts, whether there are differences between tunnels, cuttings, embankments and bridges, how constructible the routes are, where they're constructed from, the compounds and how those compounds are accessed. What are the implications of the four potential stations on the East Coast Main Line? And what are the potential mitigations and enhancements that could be put in place to make the routes more attractive than they would otherwise be? Next slide please. So in terms of preparing the council's response, we have appointed our consultants to advise on technical matters. We've set up a web link for the public to tell us what they think, although we do keep stressing that it's most important that you tell East West Rail what you think. It's just we would like to know to help us decide. We're meeting every parish council through whose territory the route might go and I think we've nearly done all of those now. We've met with the Protect Poets Group that's been formed. We are holding what is now the second of two public meetings and our proposed response to the consultation will be debated at the full council meeting on the second of June. What happens next? Firstly, please do respond to East West Rail directly. As the mayor said, they're the people who are making the decisions together with the Department of Transport nationally. But also, please take the opportunity to tell us what you have told them so that we're aware of the views of the public in Bedford Borough. And if you want to comment during this meeting, there's the email link that Craig read out earlier, I think we've got one more slide. Yep, this is the timetable from here on in. Firstly, we will be responding to the consultation by the ninth of June. We expect East West Rail to make a preferred route announcement, so going down to a single option in quarter one of next year. There will then be a consultation on that preferred route and this is the statutory consultation, the one that really counts. And that will likely to be starting in April 22. From that, East West Rail would make what they call a development consent order submission in early 2023. That's basically a planning application put in at the national level. So it won't come to Bedford Borough's Planning Committee to determine. It will be a government-appointed inspector who holds an inquiry. That will take some time and if he approves or she approves the development consent order, that would only be towards the end of 2024. That would allow construction to begin in 25 and trains to run to Cambridge in 2030. Next slide please. Was the last one. It is now question time. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I'm sure people will tell me if I'm still cutting out. Hopefully I'm not. Lesley, could you come and move on and move on to the first question please?
Yeah, certainly, Craig. So the first question we have is from Andrew Bentley. Andrew, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Great. Lesley, if you want to ask your question to the panel, please.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd just like to say, start by saying I am in favour of the East West route linking Oxford and Cambridge, but have serious reservations about which route is followed regarding my village, which is Wildon outside Bedford. I'm asking for alignments eight and nine, the southern options, rather than alignments one, two and six. The northern ones, the northern ones that would devastate Wildon by running straight through the middle of our village, I believe, 100 metres from the village hall, very close to the church and so on. The southern options don't go anywhere near as close to other village centres such as Renhold, Clapham, Brickhill etc. So we are nowhere near as, it is nowhere near as bad for them. Wildon is much harder and closer than anyone else by the northern lines. Also, I was intrigued by the mention of trying to avoid most environmentally challenging areas as well. I don't know if any person that said, John that said that, has he been to Wildon? Has he seen Cleet Hill, Clapham Green? Quite a problematic area to build a railway over, I would say. The very close northern route, diesel freight and passenger trains will cause Wildon untold noise, vibration, pollution and disruption. There will be years of road closures, dust and lorries as they build the double railway line through here only 100 metres, as I say, from the village hall and the High Street. It also cuts across Strawberry Lane, Checkers Hill and Colston Road. I'd just like to say, when I decided to move to Wildon over 20 years ago, I was attracted by the peaceful and rural setting of the village and I really don't want that ruined. Just like to end by just pointing out again that Wildon is in a valley. So it really does present a huge engineering challenge along with possibility of viaducts and very close running to many houses, including gardens. And I really feel that it's a very poor option regarding us.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Bentley. Thank you for being on time as well. Thank you very much. John Shortland, can you please answer that question?
Yeah, I think the first thing I'd like to say is that the council is still looking at all of the issues around both the southern eight and nine routes and the northern one, two and six routes to make sure we're fully aware of all of the issues that would be faced by either option. We've held meetings with each of the parish councils along the routes to understand the local views of what the problems are particularly for those villages. We're collating that at the moment together with the information we're collecting from things like the heritage record and archaeological records, conservation issues. And we will be putting all of those into the mix, but we don't, certainly as I speak, have a preference for one route or the other. I think one thing which I particularly picked up from the meeting we had with Wildon Parish Council, who presented a very well-constructed case, was the issue you raised of the line being very close to the northern edge of Wildon. And they suggested that it might be possible to look at a route if that one was chosen, which was further away from the village. That appears to have some merit to it and that is something I've asked our engineering consultants to have a look at and see whether we might be able to say if it went that way, could it go further away from the village? That's not to say that we're saying that our choice or our preference is for that route. It's a what-if scenario. So if somebody chose that route, could it be further away from the village? So that is something we're looking into as I speak. And in terms of disruption, I don't think anybody could deny that there will be disruption from constructing a project like this. We have spoken to colleagues in Buckinghamshire, where the line is already under construction, to learn what's gone well and what's gone badly there. We will be bringing those lessons to Bedford to make sure we get the best operational scenario that we can. And we will be making sure that there are construction management plans in place which say these are the routes which construction traffic can take and these are the ones, more importantly, that they can't. These are the hours that they can operate and these are the hours that they can't. And we will be making sure that those can be not only understood by all of the contractors but also enforced to make sure that they follow the rules. So yes, I think you're right. There will be disruption through the construction of something as big as this. It's our job to minimise that and make it as painless as possible.
Thank you, John. Thank you for answering that. Anybody else got anything to add there from the panel? No? Okay, thank you. Okay, Lesley, next question please.
Yeah, the next question we have is also about route options within Corridor E and that's from Kess Strider.
Okay, Andy?
Yes, I can hear you, Kess. Thank you. If you'd like to ask your question.
Okay, I'm from Brickhill, but I used to live down the London Road area of Furlong Road, so I know that area quite well. My question is, I'm really concerned about this potential route E and all the potential environmental pollution problems it could potentially cause and the loss of pressures, countryside and natural habitats to the north of Bedford and also the risk of mass demolition in the Poets' Area and also increased traffic congestion and pollution surrounding the Bedford Midland Station like in Ashburnham Road, Bromley Road, Midland Road, Preben Street etc. I would like to know why the old route, the Varsity Line, hasn't been considered this time around as part of the East West Rail proposals when, I think, 20 years ago when it was called an inner route, it was their preferred option?
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for that. Again, I think that's probably yourself, John.
Yes, I'll certainly make a start on that. I think the first thing I'd like to say is that we, I don't think anybody's denying there are environmental challenges to a northern route. But equally, there are environmental challenges to a southern route. I think all of the routes have different but important environmental challenges which will have to be overcome by the railway through the process that's set out in front of us where they go through a development consent order application to the National Planning Inspectorate. A key part of the inquiry that the inspector will hold into their plans will be about the environmental impact and how they can achieve environmental net gain as part of their works. The work that's been done on the environmental issues so far, and admittedly this has to be at a fairly high level when you're looking at a corridor-based approach. If you think back to the map I showed of Corridor E, the gap that it's trying to get through between Sandy and St Neets is five, maybe seven kilometres wide. It's very difficult to do an environmental comparison between something of that nature in one place and something of an equally broad nature in another place. So as the process goes on, that environmental work ramps up and the choices narrow down. That work will have to be done by East West Rail as part of their DCO submission and it will be open to challenge firstly in another statutory consultation and then at the Planning Inspectorate. In terms of the route choice, I mentioned at the start of my presentation the fact that there were initially 20 different routes that were under consideration. I've looked at the newspaper cuttings that you kindly provided when you submitted your question and I can see what you're saying about what we then call the inner and outer routes. I think things change. That is nearly 25 years ago. Different things apply now to those which did then. One of the things which has changed locally is that the county council, which was then the Transport Authority, was abolished in 2009. The Borough Council has now developed its own views as the transport authority for the borough. And those views have been fed into the East West Rail company, but they're not the sole determinant. Certainly by no means the sole determinant. People have looked at the Varsity Line and said, why can't you rebuild down the old track bed? I think it's worth noting some of the issues that exist for that route. It runs through what's now a large area of floodplain. Floodplains have been extended since 1995, 97 with climate change becoming a real thing. We now have to allow for flood events like the one that happened here at Christmas, which now happen with more regularity than they did before. So there is an area of floodplain which the route goes through, which would now have to be addressed. There are scheduled monuments that it affects. It goes through the middle of Priory Country Park. There are several properties and a school in Sandy that have been built on top of the old line, so you would need to deviate from it in certain places. And in addition, some of the embankments and cuttings on parts of the old line have since been classed as priority wildlife habitats. So it's not the case that there's an ideal solution somewhere else which has been ignored in favour of Route E. All of the options that were on the table last time were compared together. Route E was found to be at that time the area with the most opportunity for overcoming the environmental challenges.
Thank you, John. Any other comments to be made by any of the panel members?
No.
But just perhaps emphasise the point that John's made there that the old Varsity Line has been looked at, has been looked at several times by Network Rail and the issues that John has outlined there have been obviously discovered when it's been looked at. So it's not as if it's been ignored throughout that process, that funneling process, through the different options. You know, it has been looked at and those issues have come up when it's been looked at. It certainly hasn't been ignored as an option. as an option. And obviously, through that process, it's not been found to be a preferable option.
Thank you, councillor Headley. Hey, Lesley, can we move on to the next question, please?
Yes, Craig. This time we have a question that's in relation to the rural environments and villages, and that's from Alan Barcock. Alan, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Great. If you want to ask a question, thank you.
I request a if you can hear me, I request a tunnel that takes from north of Clapham.
I think you keep on cutting out, Mr Barcock. Shall I read your question out? I think I'll take chairman's privilege there and I'll read the question out, Mr Barcock, because we can't hear you. Okay, so I requested a tunnel at East Clapham to take the line from the north of Clapham Road, Bedford, under Carriage Drive and through the land beyond. The current East West Rail proposal one or nine envision a cutting maximum depth of 12.5 metres? Mr Barcock, can, Lesley, do you want to just be able to control that? I think it's coming over.
That's okay. Yeah, we muted. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's probably best. I don't think he realises he can't hear him. Sorry. So this would take most of the land between the golf course and Clapham Park Wood. My suggestion is the further use of tunneling equipment currently drilling under the Chilterns for HS2. It drills clay as well as chalk. Concrete tunnel linings could be made in the HS2 factory near the M25 in Bucks before it is demolished and easily transported to Clapham Road via the M25, M1 and A421. It is stated that the equipment will be available for use of others after HS2. The start of this drilling has been featured in today's news. If East West Rail were to say that these machines are too large, then there are up-to-date tunneling expertise from Crossrail which could be utilised. I suggest that this line, this line in a tunnel rather than cutting will benefit residents on the far east side of Clapham, including Clapham Green and Clapham Park in Brickhill. It will also give obvious benefits, including the avoidance of removal of a number of footpaths to trees alongside the carriage drive, which are subject to a tree preservation order dating back to 1949, and the elimination of noise. I understand that there is concerns at height of the viaduct. Presently, it appears that East West Rail profiles to rise by about 10 metres along the length. If that viaduct was made level after crossing the Paula Radcliffe Way, then the rail line could enter the tunnel through the rising ground at 40 to 43 metres above sea level, and the height of the viaduct could be substantially reduced, which would give cost savings as well as being less visually intrusive. Less obvious it will mean that the highway standard bridge to replace the carriage drive will not be required, and a large angling water main from Clapham towards Ravensden will not need to be relocated. This on the hill with the skyline from the cutting would be visible from afar. As the tunnel could go through the hill to beyond East Clapham, deep and fairly level, the steep gradients shown on provisional plans for this part of the route would not be required. I will welcome your support for this tunnel in the representations to be made by Bedford Borough Council to East West Rail. I believe, John Shortland, probably would be best to answer that. It's a technical question, but others can join in.
Yes, and I think I agree with a lot of what Mr Barcock has submitted on this. We've heard from residents, particularly in Clapham, but also from elsewhere, about the fact that this new viaduct would be visually intrusive. The plans are for it to go underneath the Great Ouse Way and then over Paula Radcliffe Way and head up towards Clapham Green, Under Hawk Drive. What we have asked our consultants to look at is whether there's an alternative option which might allow the railway to go under Paula Radcliffe Way and follow the riverbank up past the pumping station, which would mean that it's approaching Clapham and the carriage drive area from a much lower level, even lower than Mr Barcock was suggesting with having a flat viaduct, which would make a tunnel a far more attractive thing to build than a cutting. Whether that would be one that necessitated a boring machine or whether it could be done by cut and cover methods is something we're still having a look at. And I can't say that this is a definite goer yet, but the work that I've seen so far suggests that it might be. So that would mean we could do away with the viaduct across the valley, come up from the valley floor and go under carriage drive in a tunnel rather than a cutting as is proposed at the moment. So, as I say, I think I find a lot to agree with in what Mr Barcock was saying. And I think we can hopefully put forward an alternative which does include a tunnel in that area.
Thank you, John. Any other comments for panel members? Yep.
Yes, yeah, the parishes have made some very good points, and we followed that up with the work by our consultants and asking them to do more work. And I think across the board, there's been some really good comments, and this is a particular one, where we've had comments and a hierarchy in terms of whether it's viaduct, the least to cut and cover to tunneling. So any comments in terms of that are always useful for us to look at and do in further investigation. But thank you very much for the question and the knowledge you've given in that question.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Okay, thank you very much. Lesley, can we move on to the next question, please?
Yes, Craig. Our next question is in relation to freight train usage, and that's from Joanna Arola. Joanna, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Yes, I'll look at about freight. My home is actually less than 20 metres from the existing Marston Vale line, so clearly having frequent freight trains and fast trains using this line in the future is a massive concern. And generally speaking, having freight trains going through residential areas in town centre seems like a really bad idea to me. So I would like to understand how much of the traffic using the new East West Rail line is expected to be freight. I also have three specific points I would like you to address in your response. Firstly, is waste to and from the incinerator in Stuart be going to be transported using this line? Covent's website states that the reason why they chose Stuart before their location is because it has the potential to use trains to transport waste instead of using the road network. And secondly, I have seen an East West Rail report that identifies the potential for new container terminals, and this could include the Bedfordshire brickfields. Would you be able to comment on those plans? And finally, would be good to hear if there are plans for the Blakemore Distribution Centre, which is being built at Mountain Lane, to use the East West Rail line for transport in the future, as the line is right behind it?
Thank you very much for your question. Councillor Headley, can you please respond to that?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the question. I'll use this opportunity to talk a little bit of faith in general, because there's a lot been said about freight throughout this period. So, yeah, particularly want to hope to deal with some of the myths that I've heard at various times over the last few weeks. Firstly, to be crystal clear, this is predominantly a passenger railway, and this has been said all along. And I know at one point it's been stated by some people this was mainly a freight railway, and that just isn't, that just isn't true. There are four 100 mile an hour passenger trains per hour planned in each direction, as you've seen from the presentation earlier. Turning to what East West Rail Company say regarding freight, and they have got a fact sheet on there in their website that I'd encourage people to have a look at and get more information from. But they say, East West Rail is focused on connecting communities between Oxford, Monkeys, Bedford and Cambridge, three frequent, fast, sustainable passenger transport. As well as running these passenger services, government has also set as an objective to maintain the existing freight services that are already running through places like Oxford, Bister, the Marston Vale and Bedford, and to make provision for future potential freight demand. Now, it's that last point really where there's a level of uncertainty about the future freight use. What we do know from what they have said, though, is that the railway is only operating 18 hours a day. So when some people have talked about, and I know you have, when some people talk about 24-hour freight, that really just inaccuracy is that 18-hour day that they are, they're operating in. And they're also clear that there are restrictions getting on and off getting on off the East West Rail network that will limit the freight use. For instance, the section south of Cambridge only has nine freight paths a day in total, and that's actually both directions added together. So if nothing changes there, the freight's not going to be able to get onto the East West Rail, you know, at the Cambridge end. So those restrictions are quite important to understand. So, yes, there is some uncertainty about future freight use, because there's uncertainty about the demand for freight, but even more uncertainty about whether the government will fund the changes that are needed on the other bits of the railway, not the East West Rail bit itself, but the other bits of railway that would enable trains to get on and off East West Rail. Because without that extra infrastructure, those extra changes to the network that aren't part of these proposals, so they would need extra changes to, and they're not part of these proposals, the use of freight will have to be limited just by the, say, the ability to get on and off East West Rail from other parts of the network. And I also want to make it, emphasise the point, and obviously this isn't aimed at the questioner, but it's things I've heard, you know, the fact that there is a lack of detail about what the future freight demand will be, that really isn't an excuse for people just inventing myths about a 24-hour day mainly freight railway. You know, that's been said, and that isn't true, and it's never been true. You obviously answered a few particular questions. So turning to Cavanta, I'm not aware of any current plans to transport waste by train. However, you know, knowing that a freight train takes about 68 GVs, I think, is the stated figure, 68 GVs off the road, I think it would be very welcome to the local community. I know you said you live somewhere near the line, so I don't know whether you live, how near you live to that particular part of it, but it'd be, I think it'd be very welcome to the local community if the number of lorries travelling to Cavanta could be reduced by the use of rail. You know, the waste is going to get there one way or another. And if it's by rail, it would have the least environmental impact in general, you know, it's more environmentally friendly, but it would particularly for the local roads near the site that you're going to be used to access the site, they would obviously alleviate the number of lorries having to arrive. So I think that, you know, the use of freight, travel, the waste to Cavanta would actually be welcome compared with the alternative, which is using lorries. I don't know, John, whether you, I don't need anything more to say on the other specific about sort of freight, use of other freight sidings in the area?
There are no current plans for any freight sidings elsewhere in the area. It may be that people, once they see the line in operation, might feel that their factory could do with the siding to use rail instead of road. But at the moment, there are no proposals that have come before us.
So just in terms, that's the AF Blackmore, there's no proposals for that, and we, personally, I don't see how it would work, but it would cost a lot of money for just one factory to put a siding in, I suggest.
Thank you, everyone. I'll ask Lesley to move on to the next question, please.
Yeah, the next question is from Susan Jacobs in relation to costs and who pays. And Susan's unable to attend tonight, so Craig, would you be able to ask a question on her behalf?
I will. I will do my best. Thank you. What is the cost of the improvements to the station and the car park? How are BBC going to fund this? Are BBC paying for the compulsory purchase of the properties required to facilitate the above? Councillor Headley, could you please answer that?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and thank you for the question. This is actually a very straightforward answer. Neither of these things will be funded by Bedford Borough Council. All the costs for the East West Rail Company proposals will be included in their total costs of this whole, this project that they're putting forward. And you've seen earlier in the presentation from John Shortland, the issues around the properties near the station, it's very much depend on the design of that station and even the location of where that station is going to be. So, you know, we don't really know the footprint of that at all at this, at this stage, you know, particularly picking up your point there about the properties near the station. But just to elaborate a little bit on that, again, referring to the presentation, what we've done, we've put in a bid to the government for a town deal, you know, I've heard that referenced, and this includes a project for high-quality public realm outside the station and in the middle, Midland Road area. And it's about, I believe it's about £30 million for these two elements. We're still waiting to hear whether we're going to get that money, whether that's successful or not, but this is to very much improve the public realm in the area. It's not the funding for the station redevelopment itself, and obviously we don't even know if we're going to be successful in getting that funding, but if we are, it'll be money from the government anyway, not money from the council. Okay, I hope that helps answer your question. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Headley. Anybody else would like to add to anything there? No? Okay, thank you. Lesley, if we can move on to the next one, please.
Yeah, we've now got a few questions in relation to electrification of the line, and the first question is from Colin Pilbeam. Colin, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Lovely. If you'd like to ask your question, please.
Yes. Good evening, everybody, and I would concur with Andrew Bentley. I live in Wildon as well, so just to comment that. But my question is this. Given national and international commitments to reducing carbon emissions and improving sustainability, will Bedford Borough Council commit to ensuring the East West Railway is fully electric from the beginning, rather than having an initial period of operation using diesel locomotives?
Okay, again, I believe that probably would be best answered by councillor Headley.
Yeah, thank you. As far as we're concerned, the line should be electrified from day one, and we've made that very clear and continue to make that statement. We're disappointed that the government has not funded the initial stage from Oxford to Bletchley to be electrified. This is where I think many of the comments have come from about initially using diesel passenger trains, that you sometimes hear. It's, we went to talk about initially, I think they're relating very much to that initial stage that's being built between Oxford and Bletchley. We think it's short-sighted that they are doing that, but it isn't the section that's going through Bedford that's being talked about in that. Now, East West Rail Company has said that they're aiming to deliver a net zero-carbon railway, and they'll be considering conventional and emerging technological solutions for powering trains when all EWR services are fully operational. That's a key I'll come back to. They also said the use of diesel-powered train is not a project objective. So we think the government should commit from the outset to electrification, as it's a known, successful and efficient method. But I would put line the point that what East West Rail Company have said, that when services are fully operational, and that means the Bedford to Cambridge section, it will be a net zero-carbon by electrification or some other technology. Now, obviously, what we want to do is hold on to that, that they've said that's what they're going to do. We're going to push a full electrification and push them to stick to that commitment that they've given.
Thank you, councillor Headley.
But if I can just add, if people do believe that, and there's a lot of, across the whole line, there's belief that it should be electrification from day one when the line is set up, if people can add that to the consultation, I think it helps. I'm pretty certain we'll be adding that. So if people do put that in, it just adds to the pressure for the government to commit to a known technology that will deliver that carbon-neutral railway line.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Lesley, next question, please.
Yeah, Craig. Our next question is from Claire Burton, who's unable to attend tonight, so if you'd like to ask a question on her behalf?
Okay, I will do. Can you confirm if this line will be electrified? If it is not, why not? Can you confirm there is an intention to have this major freight line? And will this line carry dangerous and hazardous goods? I understand Route E is the most expensive route, and it then has two stations in Bedford within a mile of each other with limited parking. Would an out-of-town station like Wicksums not have been better for the second station? With better land for a new station, access and accessibility, why was this option not chosen? Councillor Headley?
Thank you. I mean, I think I've probably, I've answered enough on terms of the freight points that are made in that question, also electrification point that I've just answered. You know, we are in favour, very much in favour of the electrification of the line. So I really want to concentrate on the latter part of that question, really on the Route E and the Wicksums sort of issues, and Bevson Johnson's been mentioning there. Firstly, to be clear, the Firstly, to be clear, the the Route E corridor was the second cheapest option. And it provided the most benefit for every pound spent. It's cheaper than Route B. And I know that's, you know, Route B's had a lot of attention, but Route E corridor was cheaper than the Route B corridor. Remember, we're talking about the previous consultation when we talk about, it's not about the current consultation. This is the previous consultation. Mention St John's, we already have a station at Bevston Johns as well as Bedford Midland. But being part of East West Rail will give an added benefit to the St John's Station. You know, being able to get direct trains to Cambridge. And it'll be obviously easily accessible for people in the area and for the hospital as well, particularly one of the relocated options, as you saw. And we now have the opportunity in this consultation to have an East West Rail station south of Bedford at Stewartby. And I would encourage everyone to support this option. As it'll give the opportunity for people in the the Wharton, Stewartby, Wixams and the wider area around there to access East West Rail services without having to drive into Bedford. This really does give us the best of both worlds with a central Bedford station and a station south of Bedford. It's not either or, there's an opportunity to have both. And alongside that, we're also developing a Thameslink station at Wixams. And this would and this would not really have been, well, it wouldn't have been possible with it if there was a separate southern partway station, which is one of the options interchanging with the Thameslink service system where south of Bedford. They wouldn't have built two Thameslink stations, one just south of Bedford and one at Wixams, because it'd be too close, too close together. So, you know, if that had happened, there wouldn't have been a Wixam station. The other option would be an interchange at Wixams itself as a as a southern partway option. But network rail plans that we've that we've seen, it would mean that the to to actually get that railway in would mean the demolition of at least one hundred and fifty homes in Wixams. That was an option that we've seen drawn out and planned. And it's part of that pack of information that John Shortland referred to earlier. So, you know, getting a partway station south of Bedford is not as straightforward. And I think it's important to highlight that, you know, Wixams would either be no station at all, because it'd be further up the line away from Wixams, or if it had a station, it would it would need the demolition of one hundred and fifty properties to get the line through Wixams. And another example of of why the southern southern routes aren't, you know, they've got their own difficulties. If you go a bit further along the southern routes, you go to Great Barford. And one of the network rail plans we've seen for Southern Route B would cross the river right right adjacent to Great Barford. It looks like it would need quite a long biodebt in the area because there's a bit of a flood plain there. So, you know, I'm surprised, you know, people like the Borough Council for Great Barford, I know it's one of those wanting to reopen you know, that those options and put those back on the table. Now, I'm really quite surprised that people from from that area like Great Barford do, because obviously there are there are difficulties with these other these other options. And, you know, here's some campaigners talk, they give the impression that there's a this is like this mythical line to the south of Bedford that has no impact on anything. But really, that that really is just a stuff of fantasy. When you deal with the real world, there are all sorts of impacts to the environment and the communities south of Bedford from the alternative options. Yeah, now, I I understand that people impacted by the route that's currently proposed would rather a different route corridor had been chosen. I understand that, and that's really quite understandable. But putting the, you know, it's equally important to understand that putting the route elsewhere has as many, if actually not more, issues and gives less benefit. So you're getting, you know, more more issues and less benefit by putting the railway somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Headley. Any other comments from anybody else on the panel? No, okay, thank you. Lesley, move on to the next question, please.
Next question is from Adrian, our niece. Adrian, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Lovely. Yeah, that's great. If you'd like to ask your question, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm seeing various information regards upcoming updates to Bedford Rail Station and associated lines. Something not yet clear is whether the rebuilt Bedford Station will get the southbound fast line platform so that there can be good and fast train services back from Leicester, Bedford, London. For the updates to the network to bring the benefits to the town of Bedford being ported, having such a fast line in operation is considered pretty essential. It would certainly influence my potential return to the town after having moved away for reasons related to work commute.
Okay, I think we've lost you there, Adrian.
No, I think that's the that's the end of the question.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you very much. Sorry about that, Adrian. Yeah, councillor Headley.
Yeah, thank yeah, thank you. And thank you for the question. I think you've highlighted a very important point there. I mean, for those people not familiar with the station, if you, you know, if you go if you go to the station, there's one line through the middle that's got no platforms on it. And that's the fast line down to down to London. And, you know, that is that is an issue. It's something we believe is very important as well to get a fast line with a with a platform. You mentioned the removal of services. We've been we've been campaigning against the removal of Bedford from the intercity map by the government, you know, it's disgraceful action by the government to, you know, to take away our intercity services, you know, the real impact on our on our community. We believe that this new station if it includes a London bound fast platform, then that will be a big step in getting those intercity trains back, because it will mean they haven't got to move off the fast lines to stop, basically. So it's obviously the advantage of not having, you can stop your train on the fast line, stay on the fast line, you haven't got to move off the fast lines, which they'd have to do at the at the moment. And we're working on the option and believe that the redevelopment needed for East West Rail will be a real catalyst to get this improvement that we that we really need. I mean, obviously, a pure East West Rail proposal doesn't need the fast line platform. But we're going to do everything we can to get it included. And in fact, it's explicitly included in one of the station options. So if you look at the consultation, the the southern station option, it does explicitly include a station that's got a fast line platform. And we and we, you know, it can be incorporated in both options, but, you know, it's explicit there in one of the options. We believe it can be included in either either of the options. You know, this will benefit the train operators, all the train operators from Bedford. And the rail industry should really seize this opportunity. And we are doing all we can to make that make that happen.
If I could just just update, in terms of doing everything we can to make that happen, I have been invited to a meeting on Friday morning to start those discussions.
Thank you, John.
I'm I'm going to just come in here, and I think this is, you know, this is what makes it a rail hub. So why wouldn't the Corby commuter line, the Thameslink want to have passengers? Why wouldn't Midland Main Line with the intercity trains that go into the Midland cities want to stop here? So they would see it as an advantage, we think. And and we will do all we can to make that case when it comes here to make sure that we get that stopping service on the fast line up to London.
Thank you. Lesley, can we move on to the next question, please?
Our next question is in relation to disruption during construction. And the first question is from Christine Bent. Oh, Chris, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Lovely. If you want to ask your question, thank you.
In two thousand and seven, my husband retired from a job which gave us accommodation. So we sorry, I've lost my place of paper. We decided we needed to live somewhere where he could commute into London. And we looked at Bedford because it was advertising itself as town with markets. It had the embankment. It also had a lively high street and it had easy access to beautiful countryside with lots of footpaths. I'd like to ask how Mr Hodgson reconciles the apology he gave to Bedford Borough residents about the comparatively short overrun of a closure of Bromham Bridge with the years of chaos and devastation that's going to be caused to the town and the countryside because Bedford Borough Council lobbied so hard for Route E. Especially as according to the archives I've seen, Network Rail, East West Rail, Sandy Council, Will Gallagher, EWR's Strategy Director and many others presumed before the twenty nineteen consultation that the route would be south of the river along the existing more appropriate transport corridor. I know councillor Headley doesn't believe this, but from things I've read, and I'm obviously not an expert, I would have thought that the southern route was more environmentally friendly because it would be cheaper to build and therefore to run shorter and therefore quicker. Wouldn't require the demolition of parts of the town and swathes of the countryside and could probably be electrified because it's flatter. Surely now is the time for the Lib Dem run Borough Council to rescind its support for EWR's choice of Route E. EWR is, after all, part of the Conservative government. Shouldn't you, as Liberal Democrats, be opposing Route E, thinking about the current community and their environment and not lobbying for Route E so that thousands of houses?
Thank you very much. I think that's each member probably will want to say something on this. I'm going to start first of all with John Shortland. John, do you want to add some points there? Think you're on mute, John?
Apologies. I will make some points. I think previous answers have picked up on the fact that there will be disruption as a result of building a new railway line that that can't be avoided. And our mission is to minimise that disruption and make sure that the world continues to function in the way that it should, despite this work going on. In terms of route selection, I I I hesitate to go back to what I said previously, but the twenty routes which were initially considered were narrowed down to seven, were then narrowed down to two. We got a choice of five and that choice of Route E has been made. Now, whether people before the decision was made thought it would be a different one, that's understandable. People have opinions and they have reasons for those opinions. But if we were to go with people's opinions before the consultation happened, there really wouldn't be any point in having the consultation. The consultation put the ideas on the table, it invited responses to them. And we put forward a response which said we want the railway to come through Bedford Town and interchange at Bedford Midland. The economic benefits of doing that in terms of jobs and money coming into the borough is far greater for a site in the middle of town than it would be for a station which bypassed the town to the south. So that decision has been made. We're now faced with a choice that East West Rail are giving us between alignments within the corridor. And we need to make sure we give a good response that picks out the costs and benefits to the borough of both of those options, plus the options elsewhere down the line and says this is what works best for us as a borough. And I think we need to do that and focus on the question before us and not try and reopen a question which was decided over a year ago.
Thank you, John. Councillor Headley, you you were mentioned as well in the question. Did you want to say anything before I go on to the mayor?
Well, I think I was mentioned in in terms of my previous answers in terms of the 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 disbenefits of the the southern routes. And, you know, the the point the point is that, you know, option B, corridor B. And remember, this is not the consultation that's now taking place, this is a consultation from twenty nineteen. But but corridor B was found to be more expensive than corridor E. You know, that's the that's the situation. And I know people say that isn't the case, but you you look at the documents and the the work that's been done, and that is the that is the case.
Thank you, councillor. So, Mr Mayor.
Mrs Ben just talked about the swathes of countryside, but, you know, let's be under no illusion, there are swathes of countryside south of Bedford as well. There are swathes of countryside west and east of Bedford as well. So wherever we go, there will be swathes of countryside. As councillor Hevy said earlier on, I think it was councillor Hevy, said a hundred and fifty five houses to be demolished if you have a southern route. So we're swapping one lot of demolition, and we don't believe the demolition in the town is necessary. We believe you can do it with four tracks, and we were urged for that very, very hard to say that is possible. We believe it's possible, and so do Network Rail. Just in terms of the Bromham Road Bridge, you know, it wasn't our project. We were on at the backs of Network Rail constantly to try and get it delivered. And I, you know, I was not happy with that, and I don't think anyone was happy with it. And in terms of, you know, opposing the Conservative government, because we're a different party, I will not oppose for opposition shake. We are here to get the best we can for Bedford residents, do the best we can for the residents to improve their economic outcome and improve their their life generally. It will, as we've all said, cause disruption. What we've got to look at and various residents arguing that is putting the case for how you can minimise it and what affects them, what least affects them. And we entirely understand that. But we have to do that because I do believe, and the evidence we've got says it will have economic benefit for the borough.
Thank you, Mayor. Lesley, can we move on to the next question, please?
Yes, certainly. Our our next question is from Mark Spurgeon. Mark, I believe you're with us tonight if you want to ask your question.
Yes, I am.
Thanks.
I'd like to draw your attention to the major disruption to the life of Bedford and the surrounding area if the East West Rail goes ahead in its current form. In addition to the well-publicised demolition of many homes, the project will impact Bedford in many other ways. In particular, Greater Whos Way, Bromham Road, Ford End Road, Paul Radcliffe Way, Portwell Street Bridge and several other roads will need to be closed for extended periods of time. The recent Bromham Road rail bridge rebuilding took nearly two years. It is unlikely that the rewinding of the bridge will take any less time as all of the services will still need to be rerouted. In the case of Greater Whos Way, this will need to be closed whilst major earthworks take place to raise the height of the roadway. Whilst the exact timing and duration of disruption are unknown, it is unlikely to be less than twelve months. The consultation document also implies that the Clapham Road roundabout will need to be raised and modified. As for the Ford End Road Bridge, it is unlikely, sorry, it is likely that it will need to be demolished and rebuilt. Again, yet more disruption for Bedford. Another impact of East West Rail as proposed is the loss of the twelve car Jarrett sidings at Bedford Station. The direct impact of this will be that Bedford will lose its twelve car trains to London on Thameslink. East West have provided no alternative solution to the loss of the Jarrett sidings. If East West goes ahead, Thameslink will have no option but to start twelve car trains south of Bedford. And Bedford will lose its regular frequent service to London. The north south service is much more important to Bedford residents than a slightly quicker journey to the outskirts of Cambridge. The overall, the economic effect of all these road closures and disruption to rail services should not be underestimated, especially in the post Covid world where Bedford and its shops are already challenged.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr Shortland, John Shortland, can you please answer that question?
Thank you, yes. I think moving on from the previous answers we've given about minimising disruption generally in terms of construction management plans. A couple of specific examples may be helpful. So one of the things that we are asking for, you make the point about Greater Whos Way needing to be raised and the disruption that would cause. We agree that would cause a lot of disruption. What we're asking East West Rail to do is install a temporary bridge adjacent to the one that needs to be raised so that traffic can continue to use the bypass rather than having to be diverted through the town. We also, as I mentioned in one of the previous answers, are looking at an option for whether the road could go under Paul Radcliffe Way rather than over it, which again would lead to far less disruption than dealing with it in the way that you might expect at the moment. So in each case, we will be looking for a solution which minimises the disruption that the people of Bedford will experience as a result of the railway being built. And we're looking at some quite innovative ways of doing that to try and come up with ideas that people hadn't previously thought of. Moving to the idea about the sidings, I don't think that East West Rail's proposal is that the Jarrett sidings are removed and therefore twelve car trains can't be used on the line here. They haven't said where they're thinking of relocating those sidings to, but it is a case of relocating them and not abolishing them. I think it's fair to say there are examples from around the country where trains are not stabled overnight immediately adjacent to terminal stations, that those depots can be quite somewhere away, whether that's up the line or down the line. And I think we need to think maybe a little bit outside the box on this. At the moment, the franchise arrangements for railways have split Thameslink from East Midlands trains. If we think back to historic times, that was all one company, that was the Midland Railway, which was based in Derby and came down to Bedford through Bedford to London. Um, which was based in Derby and came down to Bedford through Bedford to London. There's certainly a case that could be made, uh, that in future arrangements for the railway. Uh, Thameslink could be extended up the line to Corby and the trains could run all the way up there. Um, being the same trains, more of them, uh, rather than splitting the service into two arbitrarily. So I think it's not the case that the sidings will be demolished and that will be it and there'll be no more twelve-car trains for Bedford. I think there are certainly lots of opportunities for relocating those sidings somewhere along the line. Maybe even as far north as Corby, um, and we will be looking into that with East West Rail because it is, you're right. It it's definitely a question that needs to be answered.
Thank you, John. Les, can we move on to the next question, please?
We can. Next question is from Chris and Sue Screaton.
Oh, hello there. Just Chris, the wifi won't come upstairs. But thank you very much for the opportunity to obviously feed into this exercise. But in principle, like some of the others, I do support the basic logic of having an East West Rail link. However, in addition to the impact on the countryside that the northern route would cause, I believe is, I personally believe is worse than certain areas. Um, I do have strong reservations on how the initial consultation was conducted. Um, specifically, there appears to have been limited or no impact studies at this stage at least regarding pollution and the traffic. Uh, impact on Bedford that the northerly route will create. Um, both during construction, which obviously been raised before and I. Do well remember the Bromham Bridge, Clapham Road and the mountain heights work being particularly good fun. And but also longer term, once the once the work's completed. Um, also that the original consultation wasn't, in my view, particularly public. Um, in fact, we only learnt that it even happened uh, earlier this year. Um, any project of such an impact and has such an impact on area really should be more robustly publicised by the relevant parties. And I do include obviously EWR as being guilty of this as much as to a degree, I have to say the council was guilty of. Um, I have heard that it was publicised in local papers, where regrettably, a lot of those local papers are the two titles named. We haven't had delivered to our house for many years. Um, and finally, I believe that review is required on whether there's even the same demand or need for a route full stop. In the post-lockdown environment, there will be a lot less commuting. Personally, I work in a company that's over a thousand staff and we've pretty much been told we're on flexible working full stops. I I anticipate only going to the office at best once a week. Um, and and obviously that's in turn probably going to lead to. A need for either higher fares or potentially additional diesel potentially powered freight trains. Coming through the town to prevent it becoming, you know, a costly white elephant for the operator. Um, so again, as I say, in post-COVID world, I do think the business case needs to be reassessed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John, can you answer that question?
Yeah, I'll certainly have a go. Um. Firstly, I I think I agree with your last point. Um, COVID has affected travel patterns. Um, I caught the train home last night. And it was probably about a third as full as it was, um, when I used to catch it every day back in the mists of time. Um. That work will therefore be done, um, and I think we need to be aware of the process from here onwards. So East West Rail will decide on their preferred route. They then have to get approval for, um, the expenditure of the money from Her Majesty's Treasury. Um, and those guys take a very firm view on the numbers. They they will want to see a business case which still stacks up in a post-COVID era. Um, that's not something that we at the Borough Council can control, but it is definitely something that happens before any money is released by the Treasury. They do make people go through that business case process. I gave you the figures for the business case for the Western section in my presentation. And that business case will have to be prepared for the Central section in just the same way, based on post-COVID rules. So I think we can agree on that. Um, in terms of pollution, I think generally speaking, it's much better to get people out of their cars. And particularly out of their lorries and get that traffic onto the railways. Um, even if it was a diesel railway, you would get less pollution than you do from all of the people and all of the freight moving under their own volition on the road network. If we can get it electrified, which is what we want, then you can reduce that amount of emissions by seventy-five percent from what they would be in a diesel world. So in general terms, railways, I think, are much better for dealing with pollution than highway traffic. In terms of the studies that have been done to date, um. There is problem and problems, I think, in doing those studies too early. Because certainly when, if we'd looked at traffic patterns two years ago. Firstly, we wouldn't have known about COVID. And secondly, we wouldn't have known what the proposals were for stations in terms of allocating trips to them. So in the meantime, what we've been doing, we've we've built a traffic model for Bedford. Um, which has been validated in the last few months. And that is now available so that we can plug in the locations of stations once they become known. And we can plug in the journeys that people currently make and the ones that they may wish to make. On the basis of new station locations and we can work out what the traffic situation is likely to be on the ground. As councillor Headley said earlier, um, one of the big advantages of the current proposals is that it includes both the station. South of Bedford on the East West Line at Stuartby Hardwick. And also the station that we're building at the Wixons. So for people who live in the south of the borough. Uh, probably even in the south of the town, it will give them alternative destinations. Um, to join the rail network so they can drive to those southern stations and get on the train rather than driving into the middle of Bedford. And that may well have a, um, an impact on traffic flows and on pollution as a result of that. Uh, once we know exactly where the stations are, um, we can start plugging in the model. And working out what the traffic movements will be, but to try and do that before you know where the stations are is a a bit of a fool's game.
Thank you, John. Hey, Lesley, can we move on to the next question, please?
Okay, yeah, we have a question now from Debbie and Paul Irish. Debbie, are you asking the question?
Hello there. Yes, can you hear me?
I can, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Um, so before I actually ask my question, if I may. Um, I am a resident of Great Barford. Um, and as you'll appreciate, I do sympathise with the earlier speakers from Wildon. But I must ask the council to refer Route One as Route Eight or Nine would devastate Great Barford. And many other villages along the southern alignment. I may be one of those campaigners described just now in what felt rather patronising, I'll be honest. Um, but to correct the myth stated by councillor Headley. We are not claiming a route south of Bedford is without consequence. We're asking for fair and open consideration of all the routes. So to come to my question, we're not hearing reasons why people would want to travel into Bedford. If there were to be a town centre station connection east to west. For example, people in Cambridgeshire being interviewed on TV are saying that the rail link might be useful for them to get to or from Cambridge or Milton Keynes. There's no mention during coverage of this deeply flawed blight on North Bedfordshire of anyone heading for Bedford as a destination. Making Bedford no better off than it was before and significantly and permanently harmed. It will simply become an interchange hub for people to go through to somewhere else. A goal that seems to be borne out by comments made by the Borough Council over the past couple of days. Let's be honest, the only change the people of Bedford will really see will be increased traffic on the already congested roads in and around the town. And more noise, all at the expense of the people, countryside and ancient villages and settlements of North Bedfordshire. The world has changed since twenty nineteen. Post-pandemic, businesses are looking to reduce their office spaces as fewer people will be commuting. Town centres are the least preferred locations as companies look for out-of-town sites. This significant shift in society in general points towards a station and development south of Bedford. Which would be a win-win for the town, the people and East West Rail. We do not need a railway through the middle of our town, which you seem to be clinging on to as the only solution. Maintaining the Victorian view that a station must be in the centre of town, bringing increased traffic. When most new businesses are likely to be located on the outskirts is flawed. We have heard again today the numbers that sound very specific relating to general investment and jobs. Twenty million pounds, which now has a multiplier of five, making it a hundred million pounds worth of supposed benefit to Bedford. Please tell us exactly where the four hundred and sixty-eight jobs will be created, the nature of the roles. And please tell us the necessary detail behind these increasingly extraordinary financial claims to help us understand their source. In short, beyond the rhetoric, please show us the evidence you've just referred to. Of the alleged benefits for the people of Bedford and surrounds. Who are these companies who are desperate to relocate to Bedford Centre? Is this not just an outdated project? You're applying for a government fund for town centre investment, which is fantastic. But it does not appear to be dependent upon East West Rail passing through the station. It's possible to invest in the town centre, station and rundown areas. And also build more homes, create more jobs without destroying areas of Bedford and the surrounding villages and countryside. And without permanently harming the lives of thousands of others. Please respect and listen to the people you represent and have the courage to look again. And change your mind about route E. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Mayor, would you like to respond to that, please?
Yeah, thanks very much. I know Mrs Irish didn't mean it, but we already have a railway line running through the middle of our town. Uh, and I know she's aware of that, but just wanted to clarify what we do. And, uh, the master planning we have for the town centre means more houses. So the government set us with the standard methods of development. We have to build twelve hundred and seventy-five houses a year, otherwise they'll develop them and we have to have a plan for that. Uh, and there'll be a local plan that's been published, uh, later on. And the current local plan for twenty thirty has a lot of houses in town centre. And if we want to have those people to have a modal shift and not all have cars or two cars per household. We need to give them the options about using something other than the car. And that way, my will mean that they can actually travel to the Midland cities across to Cambridge, across to Oxford. So it will give them the option to work in Bedford or actually outside Bedford and and do that growth. So who is there? And you know, and if we don't have that growth in there, it will have to be somewhere in the villages. But I, you know, I have the economic development portfolio hold. And when I talk to businesses, they talk about being connected. It's about how we can connect to other places. And you're quite right, the businesses will be on the, to a large extent, on on the suburbs. We will have some high-tech stuff in the middle. We'll have some landing, uh, patches for inward investment from around the world. And we've seen that already in Bedford, that companies from around the world are coming to Bedford. And actually, we've just recently opened a Swiss company and one of my first ones was a Danish company. Um, and they come to Bedford. Whenever I talk to the managing director, the chairman, is they talk about the connectivity. And that's what matters to them about how quickly we can get to London, how quickly we can get to the the population. And not about their product, not about their customer, but about their managers. Improving our connectivity with the economies of East West Corridor will have further improved our economy. So if we look at the Oxford to Cambridge, we can see their thriving economies. And to quote from the National Infrastructure Commission report about Oxford to Cambridge Corridor. As the effective economic footprint of each city has rapidly grown outwards, the infrastructure provision has failed to keep up. This is currently a major constraint on the future growth of those two areas. This is where the East West Rail comes into play, allowing expansion of the economic activity. Some of those high-value jobs are crossing Cambridge, moving across to Bedford and all the outskirts of Bedford. To expand the corridor to places like Bedford. So just for example, a short journey, a short training journey away from Bedford to Cambridge. Will actually be the same time as crossing from one side of Cambridge to the other. Increasing connectivity will ensure there is economies of scale and a virtuous circuit. Bedford Borough becoming part of a booming wider economy across the corridor. The council has worked for this new railway that will boost our economy since nineteen ninety-five and even earlier. And we don't want to want it now, uh, we don't want to miss it now, now that the railway sort of ends up bypassing Bedford. And future generations will look back on us with confusion if we let the opportunity pass. It's a chance to actually be a a major hub for the modern world as we move to a zero-carbon economy.
Thank you, Mr. Okay, thank you very much. Can we now move on to the next question, please?
Yeah, the next question is from Paul Jenkins. Paul, I believe you're in the meeting.
Thank you, Lesley. Good evening, everyone. My name's Paul Jenkins and I'm speaking on behalf of CPRI Bedfordshire countryside charity. It's important to say CPRI is supportive of East West Rail in principle, recognising the benefits it can bring. By reducing the number of cars and heavy goods vehicles on our roads. And reducing their carbon footprint, particularly if the line is electrified, which it definitely should be. However, we find it very hard to understand why EWR Co has chosen route E. In preference to an alternative southern route in Bedford, based on route B. And the first part of my question is to ask why the Borough Council continues to support this choice. And say that route E is less environmentally damaging than a southern route. No detailed environmental impact assessment of route E has been carried out. And there's no detailed comparison of route E with route B in terms of environmental impacts in Bedford Borough. In particular, EWR's consultation report gives no recognition of any environmental sensitivities of the route. Between Clapham and St Nietsel Thamesford. Now, this section of the route, as we know, runs across an area of open countryside, rural villages. Whereas a southern route provides an opportunity to locate the railway within the existing A four-two-one transport corridor. Which is already developed commercial activity. As a result, it seems clear to us that environmental harms associated with route B substantially outweigh any negative impacts associated with route B. I listened into some of the meeting yesterday where John Shortland suggested. That the environmental challenges in North Bedfordshire can be more easily managed. I'd be really interested to hear John able to illustrate what he had in mind in that respect. Also, can he explain why he believes environmental challenges in the southern route are so much more difficult to manage? In Cambridgeshire, East West Rail Co have said. They wish to take advantage of the A four-two-eight transport corridor from the Black Cat to Cambridge. Recognising substantial costs and environmental benefits of doing so. So why doesn't EWR Co and the council recognise the same benefits can be achieved in Bedfordshire by using.
Can you draw your question to a close now, please, Mr Jenkins? It's been well over your time allotted.
From Black Cat to Bedford. Well, I must say it's good to open this issue for right at this point, but this conversation is taking place two years too late. And you should have engaged with residents in this way before you decided to support route E in two thousand and nineteen. Briefly, the last part of my question is, does the Borough Council support route E because it shares EWR Co's view? That the key project objectives of EWR are to deliver economic growth and support large-scale housing equipment. Environmental concerns are given a very low priority. It's clear that through its port of route E, without consulting Bedford residents. The Borough Council has decided to take a favourable view of the opportunities EWR brings. To support housing growth in the north as borough.
Thank you, Mr Jenkins. I'm going to have to push you because we've got other people and we've got very limited time left. Um, Mr Mayor, can you please answer that question? I think you're on mute, Mr Mayor.
I am indeed. I've got away for so long without doing that. Um, so thank you very much, Mr Jenkins, for your question. Thank you for the acknowledgement and and the support for electrification of the line. That's really important in terms of this. Um, uh, the the net carbon, zero carbon that we all want to achieve. And obviously, wherever the route, the hierarchy is that railway is better for that. Um, but please do look at the, maybe John will come in, it will impact. Um, it's not just North Bedfordshire and it is CPRI Bedfordshire, not CPRI North Bedfordshire, so it will affect other areas. The key objective for us is economic growth and see our economy grow and to give us the chance. For not just ourselves, but our children, our grandchildren to have a, um, a choice of jobs to have. Um, and you'll know that the government has imposed through its standard method for housing growth of twelve hundred and seventy-five houses per annum. Uh, we don't see this as that, as the, as the having more houses. I don't see that's having more houses. This is to allow that growth to actually move in a sustainable manner. You'll notice that there's no, as CPRI said, I think published in some stage, that there is no station. Uh, in in north of Bedford to have a huge development. And we'll have to wait to see when we actually have later in in June about the, um, the. The local plan and the consultation on that. We'll go out to consultation on that. So it is from our case about economic growth and that is what's driving this. And that is why we wanted to go to Bedford to see that hub, to have that connectivity that businesses so want. To invest in an area where they can get around the country quickly and safely.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Lesley, just before we move on, I'd just like to just please ask people again, we've only got a couple of questions left, but we literally only got just over 10 minutes left. So can we move on to the next question, please, Lesley?
Yes, the next question is from Laura, Laura Parker. Are you with us, Laura?
I am, thank you.
Lovely, thank you.
So some of my questions have been, or some of the points I made have been covered by some other people, but I'll start with my question anyway. Like Andrew, I live in Wildon, and Andrew explained very eloquently everything that I could have said about the effect on Wildon that Routes 1, 2 and 6 will have. We will be directly affected, my husband and I. The route that's currently planned is going to come straight through our garden. What I don't understand is that how a route could come through a garden, it's going to take a big chunk of our garden, but not affect our house and all of our five neighbours as well, because you can't build a massive embankment that's 12 metres high, 50 metres from a house, and not affect the house itself. So I don't see how you could continue to live here with the, you know, the amount of space it would take to build an embankment or a cutting. So I think, you know, I don't know how much work's been done on the costings for the various routes. And so I'm finding it very difficult to understand how you could make a judgement on the costings of which route could be more cheaper or more expensive, because if you haven't worked out whether you'd be using tunneling, or you'd be using cuttings, or you'd be using embankments, that you could, you know, make a clear judgement on which route is the cheapest or most expensive. Now, Wildon will be massively affected. We are going to have an embankment that's 12 metres high, you know, in our garden, through to a cutting which is going to be 13 metres deep through the north of Wildon, and then at some point, it's a 15 metre higher viaduct, that is going to absolutely devastate our village, and it's going to cut our village in half. One of the points I wanted to make was that, has, you know, my original point was, has tunneling been considered for Wildon? I know that as a gentleman spoke earlier on about tunneling around Clapham area, but I've not, I'd like to understand if there's been any consideration of tunneling around Wildon area. And also, I'd like to try and understand, the original consultation was made on costings, which I can't remember who mentioned it, but someone mentioned that it was the second cheapest option. But when originally consulted, the documentation that was sent out, this Route E was the most expensive option. And what I've still not been able to find is where and why those costs changed. I think some people might have made some food and information requests for this, but so far, I've not seen any evidence as to why those costings were changed during consultation. And many people like myself would have faced my original judgement on those original costings and not the changed, the rise ones, which meant that Route E became cheaper. And I'd like to understand why that was the case.
I'll have to draw you to a close there, please, Mrs Parker, if that's okay. The points that you've asked there, I think Mr Shortland could probably answer very quickly.
The first point about the tunneling, if there are areas which are 13 metres deep in cutting, then I think there's a very good case for making those tunnels. We're still undertaking our operational assessment of the route options, and that is something I'll take on board and get my engineers to look at specifically. I think I mentioned previously that when we spoke to Wildon Parish Councils, they suggested that there may be some benefit if that route was chosen in looking at an alignment that was further north, i.e. assume, which I probably shouldn't, that that would move it further away from your house. But that is something that we can look at recommending should that be the route that's chosen. In terms of the overall costings, certainly in the response we made as a council, we made the point that we thought the costs for the northern routes had been overcosted, and the routes for the costs for the southern routes had been undercosted. We made that case, I think we made it well, and that may have been one of the things which influenced a change in the costs between what was put out at the start of the consultation and what came out in the option selection report. As well as what we did though, East West Rail had their engineers working throughout that period, and they found that some costs went up and some costs went down, as is perfectly normal as you progress a design. When you start on a project, you have a view as to what it might cost, but that view often changes both up and down throughout the process. You might find areas which are more difficult than you thought, you might find areas which are easier than you thought. So it's not unusual, it's not unreasonable that costs change throughout the process. I think there may even have been a change of engineering staff within East West Rail and the consultants they use for the costings, and it's possible that two people approached it with different ideas. One learnt from the other and built on it. So I don't think it's unusual that costs change. If you want the detail on where they've changed and why they've changed, I think East West Rail have made that available on their website. I'm getting a nod from councillor Headley, who's, I think, looked into that. So the information is out there if you would like to have a look at it. I think that's probably all I've got to say at the moment.
Thank you, John. Hey, can we move on to the next question, please, Lesley?
Yes, Craig, our next question is from Vivian Chesterfield, who's been unable to attend. So if you'd like to ask a question for her, please.
Yeah, sure. Have full environmental impact assessments been carried out to establish that Route E is the least damaging route for the environment, given that we are reaching crisis point in our bid to reduce carbon? John Shortland, can you just answer that shortly?
Yes, please. As shortly as possible would be to say no, but I think that's a little too blunt. Environmental impact assessments haven't yet been undertaken because we haven't reached the stage in the design process where that's appropriate. If I could just talk a little bit more about that, Paul Jenkins from CPRE asked me to explain why I'd said yesterday that this was the least environmentally challenging route. Can I just refer him to page 63 of the document that's been put out by East West Rail where it says, "Taking a route via Camborne offers the greatest opportunity to avoid the most environmentally challenging areas and potential direct impacts on irreplaceable or sensitive environmental features, including heritage assets with good opportunities to achieve biodiversity net gain." So that's where that reference came from. The question about the environmental impact assessments being undertaken now, it's very difficult to do an environmental impact assessment on wide corridors. As you move down to alignment specification, that becomes a lot more practical, and that will be being undertaken by East West Rail Company because it's their responsibility as we speak. So when it comes to the next statutory consultation, which will take place in about a year's time, there will be environmental impact assessments available for the public to look at, and they will be tested and challenged through the public inquiry process that will be handled by the National Planning Inspectorate. So what's been done so far is appropriate for the stage we've achieved in the design process, and more work will be done, must be done, and will be challenged as we go forward.
Thank you, John. Next question, please, Lesley. Hello, Lesley.
Sorry about that. Yes, I'm here. Sorry, we have a question from Clive Gristwood. Clive, I believe you're with us this evening?
Yes, good evening, and thank you, everyone, to hold in this session. It is really appreciated. I'm a resident in Clapham, and we feel quite let down by the public consultation that took place by East West Rail. And we also feel very let down by the lack of transparency that there is around the selection criteria. When the original plans were selected, Route E, I think, was 3.4 billion estimate, whereas the southern routes were about 2 billion. I think this massively impacted the way the public responded in the public consultation, discounting one route for being substantially more expensive. At the end of the consultation, it actually then became the cheapest route. The second point around the benefits, and they have been questioned by previous speakers, I do worry that the benefits to Bedford are being overstated, that actually residents from Bedford will leave for work in other locations or shopping in other locations. And I think we should see better transparency around the economic benefits, which I have to say, that were demonstrated today, and they really did seem quite small. And I do wonder, after the Covid crisis, whether those economic benefits are really still valid. And lastly, I think some of the issues around the details and the fact that some of the environmental assessments haven't really been made, I think overall, we should be looking at reopening the consultation and having much greater transparency for Bedford residents so that we could really at least, if not wholly support decision, buy into the transparency of the decision-making processes that have been put forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Greenwood. Mr Mayor, would you like to respond to that?
Yes, thanks very much. We're listening to the current consultation. I think the, if people are concerned about the previous one, they need to talk to East West Rail, and I know a number of people are looking at whether that can be just reviewed. I think we need to make sure we engage with this consultation. But as I've said previously, the previous answers that, you know, East West Rail will improve our economy. It's not about people coming to shop here, it is about businesses coming. But I've always been amazed by the number of people, for example, that travelled to come to something like the Philharmonia, and how far away they come from across the country to come to the Corn Exchange for comedy nights, and to visit places like the Quarry Theatre and the Place Theatre. And those are all things that bring money into our economy. People travel to the Higgins Bedford and also the Panassia Museum, and from around the world for the Buny Museum, and people that actually come for here for a week across the UK, it makes it easier to actually do a trip to Bedford, and that helps our economy. Now, town centres that are suffering, have suffered during the pandemic, Bedford has about 60% independent shops, more than Cambridge, more than Oxford, more than Milton Keynes. And I think it's well placed to bounce back. We've seen those large multinationals. We are suffering for the vast multinationals leaving, but they're also going elsewhere. And of course, people will travel outside, but people will come in. And we've heard from somebody earlier on, Adrian's comment about coming back to have that connection, and he won't be the only one. So the economic case isn't all about retail, it's about the ability to get to places. And when inward investment comes in, it's about the ability of that company to move around and have access and have access to other areas. That doesn't necessarily mean customers, but it can mean customers, doesn't mean supply chain. It's about having that access and being able, the owners being able to get to various places. So the increased job opportunities, and we are seeing that at the moment, but we believe, and when I've talked to inward investors and people who invest millions of pounds in Bedford Borough, they talk about our connectivity. And they actually like the idea of East West Rail, and they see that's a positive thing. And we want to increase the job opportunities in Bedford, and the town and the cities, and as we connect to those, it just increases our opportunities. And we need to make sure there's a real choice of jobs, not only for existing workforce, but also for our children and grandchildren, not just in Bedford, but the ability to travel elsewhere. And people will travel. At the moment, I think we have a net outflow of about 20,000. So lots of people come into the borough, and there's obviously lots of people leave the borough, and lots of people live and work in the borough. But it's that opportunity, that connectivity, it puts us in a hub in the centre of a communications rail network, and we're already there between A1 and M1 and the A421 in terms of road network. It just improves our connectivity and means we're connected to most the large economies in the UK.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I believe we've got one more question left, is that right, Lesley?
We, Craig, just one final question from Sandra Smyth, who's not been able to attend this evening. So if you could ask that question?
Okay, I'll use the privilege, chairman's privilege, and say that we'll overrun and to answer this very last question. How much funding has the council promised to EWR for the building of Route E? And has this been factored in into the 12% extra economic benefits of this route, which the mayor has quoted? Can the council publish the full assessment of these economic benefits and the assumptions they rest on, as the East West Rail line would seem to take spending away from Bedford to Oxford and Cambridge? Mr Mayor, would you like to please answer that question?
I'll answer it briefly. The council has promised no money to East West Rail for the building of Route E. For clarity, that's zero. And the assessment of the economic benefits was included in our response to the 2019 consultation, and is now available on our website.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I'm going to draw the meeting now to a close. First of all, can I just say, there's been a number of people, I've seen a number of questions that have come up that have been asked by members of the public that obviously are viewing this meeting now. And I just wanted to say a huge thank you to those people for that and for their contribution. Thanks to everybody that's participated today, and including the panel members that have given up their time to answer the questions. Finally, I'd just like to reiterate that there still is opportunity for people to still have their say through the council's consultation response. And that email, I will say another time, which is ewrpublicmeetings@bedford.gov.uk. Thank you all again, and have a good evening.
Craig, could I just remind people that please do send stuff to us, but the important thing is to get it into East West Rail Company's consultation, because that's the official one. We'll do our very best to get everything up by the second June, but there are an awful lot of questions to do. So we'll get through as many and as quickly as we can. But please do make sure that people respond to the East West Rail official consultation, feed into ours, by all means, we'd really welcome that. But actually, the people that make the decision are East West Rail Company. Thank you, Craig.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone.